Okay, being seven o'clock, we can call the meeting to order and do roll call when you're ready.
Barkle.
Here.
Evans.
Here.
Ketterin. Michael.
Here.
Nelson.
Here.
Weiss.
Here.
Huffman.
Here.
All right, everybody had a chance to go over the minutes in previous meeting. Unless there's any changes, need a motion to approve the minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion in a second, all in favor of approving previous minutes. Say aye.
Aye.
All right, looking at the agendas, is there anything that needs to be added or changed about the agenda? If not, I need a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll second.
Motion in a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Then we can do conflict of interest declarations and start with Kathy.
Uh, no.
Chris Barkle, no.
Sherri Hoffman, no.
Matt Evans, no.
Lauren Nelson, no.
Right, first agenda item isn't scheduled till 7:05, so got a few minutes. All right, being 7:05, we can continue on with first agenda item, Marquardt rezon. Applicant is requesting to rezon a rural transitional to commercial district per Article 18, Section 1809 and Article 20, Section 2003, said property is legally described as south 116 feet of lot one in southeast quarter of the northeast quarter and lot two in the southeast quarter of the northeast quarter and lot three in the northeast quarter of the southeast quarter, all located in Section 24 Township 94, range 56 west of the 5th PM. According to the duly recorded plat thereof in the Office of Yankton County Registered Deeds filed for record April 25th, 1979, recorded in book S8 on page 144, subject to easements, restrictions, covenants, and reservations of record and lot one except south 116 feet thereof, located in southeast quarter of the northeast quarter, Section 24 Township 94 North, range 56 west of the 5th PM in Yankton County, South Dakota. E911 address is 30637 US Highway 81, Yankton, South Dakota, Utica North. Anybody here to talk about the rezon application?
Good evening, my name is Dave Husby. I represent the Marquardt family. Take a look at the overhead, the, I believe the area in red at the very bottom is Marquardt Trucking.
These are the two lots they're asking to rezone.
Just trying to provide some, and then the little square right above there is the double T. So, we own the property that is that backward seven that sits on top of the double T, that's to the north. And then the one right up above it, the little square, it's about a four acre piece, is where our farm shop is. Printage on Highway 81, there's an access point that comes right in between the two lots and we would request a rezon to highway commercial or however you designate that. Highest and best use of this property going forward in the future is going to be some sort of commercial development. We're currently working on one project as it relates to the backward seven property that would front on Highway 81. Any questions of anybody, certainly more than happy to answer. All the notices were sent out, I think that Bill can attest to that, the zoning sign was posted.
You want the back for seven land become commercial as well?
Yes, ma'am.
But if you'd be including the farm shop?
Yes, the farm shop would be included, that's the little four acre section. It sits up on top.
Fuel plant.
Yep. It is. I contacted the people in double T a couple times to see whether or not they wanted to come in. And I mean, that should be zoned commercial and at this point in time, they're just sitting back, it's a non-conforming but pre-existing use, so.
Is the only access to the farm would be off of 81 or that common driveway?
There is a, I'm no good with your arrow. See, oh, there we go. There is an access point that could come off this road that goes back to the livestock operation, but there's a driveway right about there, right? And then if we needed access to this seven right here, Farnet Road could certainly go in and serve. We're not, will not be asking the DOT for another curb cut. They're not real gracious handing those things out and so on. But there is access direct onto 81 currently.
Any input from any of the neighbors on it, or haven't heard anything?
And one person asked to clarify which lots it was, they had no objection to it.
Right, I guess, is there any other questions for Dave? Right, thanks. Thank you. Is there anybody from the public that wishes to speak on this rezon application? Seeing none, I will close it now just for, for discussion. I think it ties in with the rest of it.
Yeah, I don't. I think it's kind of what the intent of the commercial rural transitional was, long. Already secured it on the truck. There are a truck stop and, or not truck stop, but the shovel shop and which makes, to me it makes very viable sense to put something right against either like that or have access to it, whatever becomes and of course, if it's any kind of building or something like that, it's still have to come in for, or.
Depending on what they do, yeah.
So, you know, it's probably revisited for whatever due on it for access to the property now and because of that, I.
Is that a motion?
I can make that motion if anybody else has been here before.
I think it ties in the, the property in between this proposed section and then the already commercial stuff is already being used commercially, so it really should be.
Yeah.
Commercial as well.
I'd like to see him come in and double T and everything all, you know, kind of put that in a block at once. The owners of this, you know, sale bar and I think there's the whole gas station too, so. Make motion or?
Motion to approve the rural transitional to commercial district for Marquardt.
Create a motion by Matt and a second by Dennis and we can, is there any final discussion? We can do a roll call vote when you're ready.
Barkle.
Yes.
Evans.
Yes.
Michael.
Yes.
Nelson.
Yes.
Weiss.
Yes.
Huffman.
Yes.
All right, motion approved. The next agenda item is the Palfrey variants. Applicant is requesting a variance to build a second residence on a non-conforming lot in an agricultural district per Article 18, Section 1807 and Article 19, Section 1907. Said property is legally described as tract three by early's addition in the northeast quarter of Section 14 Township 95 North, range 57 west of the 5th PM, Yankton County, South Dakota. E911 address is 29905 433rd Avenue, Lasserville, South Dakota, 57040. All right, is there anybody here to speak on this variance request? Come on up. Have everybody state their name for the record if you're going to be speaking.
Also, the address is actually Utica, South Dakota, 57067. Not Lasserville, Darcy Griffiths.
Deb Palfrey.
Danita Culture and we're all siblings to.
Darren Byerly.
We're all kids to Richard and Judy Byerly.
Um, do you want to give us a quick rundown of what the plan is and the, why you're requesting the variance?
Well, we're requesting a variance due to the fact that my, the existing home is a split foyer house and my parents are 80 years old and the steps are really causing issues with them in the laundries in the basement, so doing steps is getting difficult. So, we are wanting to put a modular on there for them to live in and then me and my husband would live in the split foyer to, and plus to help with yard work, winter time, snow removal, all the stuff that they're having difficulties doing.
So, it's zoned ag and the problem is it's a non-conforming lot, so if it was 20 acres, we could do it, no problem. Because it's a non-conforming lot, we're not allowed to expand it, so we have to go the variance route to put a second house on there. If it was 20 acres, we wouldn't even, we'd just issue the permit.
But basically, basically, it would still be, if you looked at from the homestead statute or whatever, that it would be a, it could be an existing lot.
They're not allowed to put a second home on there.
Yeah, but that's, you know, I know it's, you know, it's allowed in the district with the right size thing, but it ends up being a variance if it's a non-conforming lot of less than 20 acres. So, I think we are very.
I do have a question, we were kind of doing some research as we were trying to figure out what to do. There is, where was the sound, in the county, the Yankton County zoning and it said an additional dwelling unit is allowed within the farm set upon approval of the building permit if it's to be occupied by other members of the family farm unit. So, I'm not sure, does that pertain to us?
Well, that's, that's where if it's in, where you can actually put a second house on that piece of property. The issue is
it's not 20 acres.
The lot isn't big enough, so now you need to, you, we can't just, you know, like, like Bill was saying, if it had been 20 acres, you could walk in, get a building permit and that'd be no problem, but because the lot isn't big enough to qualify for the 20 acre rule, now you gotta have a variance, that's why.
Right.
And the ordinance kind of conflicts and so I talked to Devin Rogers to verify and they said, yeah, we have to go the variance route because it's a non-conforming lot.
So, was this a non-conforming lot before zoning?
Yeah.
Yes.
Well, they had to come in and get it a variance too when they sold the CRP that is behind the house. So, it was approved to be nine acres and 20 something to, I don't know, how many years ago it was.
And when they did that, that, that is when it became.
Right, non-conforming, right.
Farmstead variance was given at that point because you can, you can plot out that, just the farm and all evidence that there was a farmstead there.
Right.
It could be separate.
Yeah.
But.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
And, you know, just to add, my dad was born on the farm, he really does not want to leave the farm. They are both able to live independently, they just need extra help. And that's what my sister would be stepping up to do for them. And just those stairs, they need to be in a one level home. My dad had COVID from November and was in and out of the hospital up until February and that's really what brought all of this on is that he was very ill, near death. And, and he's come out of that, but they just can't, they just can't do some of those things on their own anymore. So, they need some additional help.
So, we're, I guess, is this variance in conjunction with the building permit then, Bill, or is this?
Well, no, they have to get a variance before they can get a building permit.
Right.
So, but I mean, they've got room to meet the setbacks.
That's what I was going to ask.
Only because it's a non-conforming lot that they're going to variance. I think the plan was to put it somewhere near the other house.
Yeah.
They still meet setbacks but be close enough to help their parents.
Correct.
It's just, you're looking at just a one level.
Modular, a smaller home.
Yeah.
So then, in the future, what would be the plan? I mean, down the road, I guess nobody likes to think about it, but once they pass on, would the modular stay there or would that be moved away then, or?
It would probably stay there because I'm not getting any younger, so. And plus, we have, I mean, there's seven of us, so when, and not everybody lives around here, so when they come back, it would be basically for extra room for family members to stay.
Family bone couch.
Yes.
I think the biggest issue would be is that it remain part of that farmstead.
Yes. Yes. It would, it would never be separated. We would never want to separate it, we want these acres to stay in the family.
That is very important to all of us, that it stays in the family.
I mean, we grew up there, so for me to go back is something that I've always wanted to do, so.
Are you planning on just extending the natural driveway that's there back to that house?
That would be the ideal. Yep.
Hook on the existing septic.
Yes. And if we do need another septic, we could put one on, but we're wanting to use this existing and the well. Because they don't have BYU water as well. So far, yeah, which I don't know, BYU water is, I hear, hard to get, yeah, expensive and hard to connect to.
I thought of, I wanted to add, there was a picture drawn out where they're setting up their, that's the.
Somewhere in this area.
Right in that area, yeah, there's a blue.
Yeah.
Outline or something there.
Yeah. In this area.
Yeah.
Of the property.
I think the biggest thing with that would be just so that they meet the setbacks on the road.
Yes, and they're, yeah, exactly, yep. And from the, from the property line on this side, we need to stay away from that side too, the road and this property line.
All right, is there any more questions for them from the board? All right, thanks.
Yep, thank you.
Is there anybody else from the public that wishes to speak on this variance request? Seeing none, I will close public comment on this and just for discussion.
On Sunday, Dave and I drove up there just to get an idea of where this is located and, you know, because the area, you can't really tell what details and it's pretty desolate up there. Growing up, I'm just saying. So, I mean, that's the, that's the one thing I was wondering if there's any neighboring, you know, landowners or anything like that and it's pretty out there all by itself. And, you know, looking at where they want to place it, I mean, it meets all the other setbacks and it's not like it's really close to a neighbor or anything like that. I grew up in a very desolate area too, so I, I understand. Keeps you out of trouble. Okay. Okay, okay. Gotcha, okay.
I guess, to me, it makes common sense and if it was 20 acres, it'd just be a walk-in thing. The part I struggle with is on the variance request is identifying what the specific hardship is that we use as our reasoning.
Well, in this sense, I think that we've already created a lot through the process as we've worked before of less than a 20 acre lot, so we're stuck at that. And they're not, they're not wanting to add a house to sell or the market, you know, so maybe families in order conversations or so. And it is, you know, through the ag industry, it is allowed. Like you say, there's a little conflict here about the size of the lot and stuff like that, there is a, it is a loud thing to watch a family member, which is, so then part of variance. Saying the hardship is access to get into it, you know, or see that or, you know, move it off and someplace else would access that, kids love.
It would be better if they can stay home.
Oh, yeah.
I think we've all seen those people that have lived on the farm their whole lives, if they're forced to go off, usually has a negative effect on them. And so that, you know, the hardship is kind of an interpretation thing, so.
Well, and then just finding houses, you know, where, you know, housing for elderly right now is just, is really hard with nursing homes closing and, you know, so.
I guess, the hardship then we would say is for access to caretakers and access to housing. And it meets all the other, all the other zoning requirements, it's basically just the lot size.
Yeah. For the fact that it's a small lot. You know, several places in the county kind of did the same thing, no matter if they wanted to build a new house or an old house, the lucky to farmstead lots, you know, are smaller than the 20 acre rule anyway. But they're, you know, we attempt way back when, hey, allow, allow that, we recycle that instead of taking new land and try to build a, you know, plot out 20 acres and take it with. As far as stating how a variance should be, you know, reinforced or whatever, I mean, I think it's a motion, I'm not sure.
Well, you can just make a general motion and I can run the terminology by you too, if that's, or I can send it to whoever to make sure you're okay with how I phrase it.
I'd make a motion to approve of the variance to allow second home construction or place on this property. Granted, we're aware of the fact that the lot size is smaller than 20 acres, but as long as the, the setbacks of that on the property from the road, from the property length and stuff like that, so that you're not encroaching on those areas, I see no problem with moderation. Family members.
That's a long motion. Let all that down. It's be watching the video tomorrow.
I practice as well.
I'll second that.
I guess I would, I would recommend to add that that on condition that it stays in the family, we can, I guess with the variance under 1807, we can put conditions on variance, so.
That it stays one, one parcel and stays.
One owner.
Yeah.
Do I need to resecond that?
I don't think so.
No.
I accept your amendment. As long as the second, except that I think we're good to go.
All right, so we have a motion in a second. We can do a vote whenever you're ready, Bill.
Barkle.
Yes.
Evans.
Yes.
Michael.
Yeah.
Nelson.
Yes.
Weiss.
Yes.
Huffman.
Yes.
All right, motion carried.
Okay, thank you so much.
Yep, thanks. All right, next agenda item is the shut conditional use permit. Applicant is requesting a conditional use permit to construct buildings for storage and shop areas in a lakeside commercial district per Article 11, Section 1107, said property is legally described as lot 21, Whitetail Run in the southeast quarter of the northeast quarter of Section 16, T93 North, R56 west of 5th PM, Yankton County, South Dakota. All right.
Hi, my name is Dan Speck and I'm from.
Hi, my name is Dan Speck, and I'm from Vision Real Estate, representing the shuts. On this application, so lots are looking at replating our, is this lot and this lot. So they, that was lot two and lot thirteen, they'll replatted it to lot twenty-one, which we've got done, and that'll go before the county commission?
Yeah, the plats coming.
Okay, so they would like to. And I don't know what you have in front of you for materials, apologize, but they would like to build six independent buildings. That have concrete floors that are insulated. They would have water soon electric to each of the units, they're proposing twenty-six units that are twenty-one by forty-six. And those would be upfront, there were bills.
Two here and three down.
Four. Four down in the bottom, and the ones on the, the bigger lot are bigger, they're twenty-nine and a half by fifty-eight feet, and there'd be fifty-three of those units. So seventy-nine total units, they would have twelve by fourteen foot garage doors on them. It would all be concrete in between the buildings, so they would have nice concrete pads to drive in between them. They would access them, it would be a phase project, so they'd start along the north part of the property there first, and then phase them into the south. And so that's where their access would come from. Yeah, the front service road, private amusement road. And then they would like to. Again, subdivide those and replat them in the future as they sell them. So if you think of a building being like a townhouse, so if there's thirteen units in a building. You could buy unit one or unit two or unit three, so you could sell those, so it'd be kind of like a townhouse or a twin home. The problem you run into with county zoning then is setbacks, because it's not, you know, it's not allowed without a, each property having a setback, without going through this process. So there are a couple of twin homes like in. Off Deer Boulevard, off of, was it in White Crane Estates?
Oh, wow.
Violet, there's a couple of twin homes in there that sit right on a lot line, so does that concept make sense, like a twin home?
Or like a condo.
Or like, or townhouse building, condos go up, tennis, yeah, yep, so that's, that's what they're proposing to do.
So they're townhouses or?
They're no, sorry, the question, they're, they're storage units or shop units.
That's what I was having this.
Yeah, I'm sorry, yeah, no, they wouldn't be lived in, it wouldn't be lived in, no, so you could have your plumbing business or your she shed or hand cave or things like that. Very, very popular. Drove to Sioux Falls or Harrisburg, there's quite a few going up. Personally, I'm working on one in the city limits of Yankton, right now, we expect to start construction as well.
So as people would buy off one of these units, is it gonna start out that they're just renting these units, or the plan is to start selling them right away?
Uh, tell me what the market's going to allow, yeah, they would love to sell them.
Okay.
You know, but, so i- in a sense, you'll own the, the. Size of the unit, twenty-one by forty-six and the dirt under it, and then the rest of it will be a homeowners association or a building association. So the snow removal, any of the, the landscaping work, that sort of stuff will all be done by the association, but you'd be responsible for your. Unit, the interior of your unit.
So the main things, the outside.
The association. Very common.
So, and I don't know if I got a total grasp on this yet, but if you're gonna build, you wanna build storage units, and you're gonna have, but there're gonna be certain, certain sized spaces. And then you could almost be a strip mall as far as you can open shops in those, in one of those spaces, it was.
Say that, what kind of space that you say?
Well, your, your thing's a shop, shop and storage, so I was thinking, okay, if you're building a long building with all this furniture, this building for either. Store your stuff in it, or somebody next to you can open a door.
Yeah, they wouldn't be used for like a retail, it would be more of a service shop, yeah, so if you go to Harrisburg, for instance, they've got one. Development similar to this, and they've got like a landscaping company where they can put their skid loader and some of their equipment, some of that sort of stuff inside.
There's not any actual.
Sales.
Have a meeting, you know, utilizing it as far as a business is concerned, other than storage for their, their stuff, I guess.
Yep.
Where my question is going is because if you, if you start putting. You know, like little shops or things like that, where, where do we go?
That's not the intent, no.
Water, electricity, and all that stuff.
Yeah, no, it's just for.
Just to dry storage.
Yeah, plumber to have a shop to work out of, so electrician, contractor of some sort. A guy that wants to put his boat in there and work on it during the winter, that kind of thing.
So these'll have electric and water to them, uh, no septic systems or sewer at all?
Yeah, they'll have to have a septic.
They will have a septic.
Yeah, it'll be a shared septic, just similar to what you see around it with the campgrounds.
So do you have a, a plan for where tanks and all that stuff would be?
That's what we have to work with the South Dakota Department of. S D N R, or D N R? D A N R, and so they're gonna require a, a plan, be approved through them. But it'd be serviced by B Y water and B Y electric. But as you can imagine, there won't be a ton of water usage. I have a building like this now, and if my water usage exceeds a hundred gallons a month, I'd be surprised. And it's flushing the toilet a couple times a week. So I guess if you, to give maybe another idea, if. I go across the street. To these two, these three buildings right here. They'll look very similar. To these, or they'll have garage doors on them, there'll be a pass-through door, a walk, walk-through door. Look very similar, the inside, except the inside will be fully finished in some of them, they'll be insulated. Have bathrooms, or a bathroom, I should say, in them. So it wouldn't look any too dissimilar than those, except they'll have concrete between them.
I guess the one thing that threw me off on is when you're saying that you wanna sell off each of these, and I see that as a future issue with the zoning ordinance and meeting. Setbacks, lot sizes, everything, so we're gonna have to, we would have to issue variances for any sales, and it wouldn't be a variance in just one aspect, it'd be lot size setbacks.
You wouldn't be lotting them out though, right?
What's that?
Would you be, you wouldn't be lotting them out though, right?
Yeah, so how you, how you build these, and we've done them, uh, is, and they, they do them all over the place, is you, you go in and you build the building. Then you have a surveyor come back in and you survey it off, so you can get exact measurements, because if you do it the other way around, you're six inches off one way or the other. So then the surveyor comes back, replats it all, and then you can go and, and sell those units.
Right, and what I'm saying is that those small flats are not gonna meet our zoning ordinance.
Right, and that's why we're asking for the. The conditional use to be able to do that. But, you know, that'd be no different than a townhouse on a zero lot line, or a twin home, a zero lot line, how would, how did they get?
Well, I guess there's, there's carve-outs in the zoning ordinance for multifamily dwellings. But. This is a little bit different in nature, I guess, to me, to make, in my mind, the way it looks is that. I don't think you can waive all of these things that you'd normally waive through variance, you can't waive them through a C U P. And I guess what would fit better for this kind of thing would be is if you'd rezone to plan unit development where you can set your own. Where you could set your own rules with it, and.
That's where I was going with it, was it more of a P U D kind of thing?
Are you aware of what a, a P U D is at all?
I don't know the process for it, yeah, I'm aware of the P U D, I don't know the process.
I remember the last time, so they were gonna do some storage units at Whitetail and mix it in with the RV park. And then, um, they changed up their plan or whatever, they were gonna do a P U D, something like that, would he have to reapply bill for a P U D?
Yeah, let me discuss this.
Okay.
Question is, we, it's been different, so this is what Dan was talking about, I think there's a lawsuit about one of these. They don't have. So if you look at I C O F, he came through here a year or so ago, and wanted to do this with twin homes, and the county commission said, no, you have to have one lot or one acre for each half of the townhouse. These only have point five nine for each half. So. The answer is, and Gary's even talked about this, where they, they can do this, where they just give them a zero, a variance for a zero lot, zero setback for each individual, and. I mean, it's, it's kind of a whole, it's one lot with little pieces in between them, unfortunately, Gary is not in today, he can explain it, but, um, it can be done without a P U D.
Would he have to come back for a variance then after the C U P is done, or do we just put it in with the C U P? Cause I know.
You just put it in with the C U P as a condition.
I thought so also.
Otherwise, he's gonna, you know, apply for, what, hundred variances.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, so I'm familiar with this in the city limits, because I've been through it, um, and so as long as the building itself meets the setback, that's what they're concerned about. So the buildings themselves will meet the setbacks. From that. If that answers your question a little bit.
And so even though you're plating each individual section, it's never gonna move, it's never gonna change, it's always gonna be there as part of that bigger lot.
So the only question I have, and I, I'm not necessarily against it, my, my question is, if you're going to plot this out, or you're gonna, you're gonna build this thing, and everything is right against each other, and all the way to the zero variance, or the zero.
Setback between.
Zero setback, and then. You're gonna sell off, say, one whole block, and then somebody's gonna, and then you're gonna survey, the guy's gonna come and survey each garage door and bucket door, and each little cubicle's gonna have its own plot, is it, am I correct? Okay, so then, what do we do when somebody comes in there and tries to do some non-conforming?
Like what?
Business or something in that.
It'd still have to meet, if they're gonna try to do a business that's not.
But is there, but is there something set up as you sell those lots that they're, or those individual spaces as lots, that they are for storage?
Just your zoning ordinance, what's ever allowed within your zoning ordinance, but, and now, to be honest, they'll probably be more restrictive, because they'll put covenants on it. Right, well, I mean, your zoning ordinance helps you, right? So that, that, that limits what they can do.
They come in here and brick covenants every five minutes, so that's annoying.
Right, but it wouldn't be less restrictive than what you have in place.
If it was something that wasn't lakeside commercial, they'd have to still go through a C U, C U P process to be able to do that. It's like if they were to buy another building and wanna change businesses, if it's something not part of the ordinance, they'd have to come through this process.
So I don't know what the uses are, but if they're, I think what you're asking is, if one of the units wanted to put. A hotel. In there, then they might have to go through this process, that's a. A gross exaggeration, or if they wanted to live.
What if they wanted to knock a wall out and join two of them?
By your zoning, they wouldn't be allowed to do that without going through this process. Cause they'd have to be rezoned.
Yeah, you know, we're talking lakeside commercial here, but all of the permitted uses in lakeside commercials are bar, so if somebody comes down there, buys three of these together and opens a bar front, opens a bar up in three of them. How do we get back at getting them in here to get a conditional use or whatever, once it, once it's permitted in lakeside commercial, they open a bar?
They wouldn't need, would they, they wouldn't need a C U P, right, if they did a bar, they could just do a bar? I think it's pretty much.
Now you're dealing with parking and.
Same thing with restaurants, love.
All the stuff like it's stranger now, or.
Taco truck.
I'm not, I'm not against what you're doing.
And that, that is where the covenants and the H O A agreements would come into play, you know, when we do it, we built sixteen townhomes. In a. B two zoning, I think, in the city, which you could run a bar out of, would be allowable, but do you think your neighbor's going to let you?
It doesn't matter.
You know what I mean?
It doesn't matter, it, covenants don't matter.
Sure they do.
Well, I'm not, if you've been in court with them, they matter.
Yeah, they're talking, they mean here, like, civilly.
Civilly, you couldn't, right, right.
So you're the neighbor complaining about somebody breaking the covenant, now you're the one stuck hiring the lawyer to enforce the covenant. Nope.
I mean, I suppose you could take it as far as you want with any of that kind of stuff, but.
So you said, how many total units would there be?
Seventy-nine, is that what you said? Yes. So their plan would be to start with those first two buildings near the highway.
I guess Matt, you'd be able to answer this, I can't remember for sure, but I thought that when we have, we've had the applicants for like the campgrounds and everything, we required them to have like a sewer plan and all that draw it up before.
So, this is what I would say to that, and I actually brought it to the county, uh, three months ago, four months ago, something like that. There's a campground actually right next to this, and, uh, this campground was built, and there was a list of stuff that I had, not against them, there's plenty of campers for everybody, there's a list of stuff that I had. To say, hey, these are the guidelines that you should go by, this is the order of the stuff and the permits that you need, uh, to get the stuff done. The county actually dismissed it and said that they didn't want it, ironically, that campground had to tear up all their stuff, D N R came in here, somebody must have reported them. They tore all their stuff up, and they also actually put in a water line here, uh, this last couple of weeks without permission, so I do believe. I don't think this is as extensive, like, we're not talking about a ton of water usage here, we could still put a condition on it, in my opinion, it's nothing against you, Dan, like.
Isn't that part of your building permit process?
No.
Okay.
No, so, this is, this is the A N R's rules, D N R works as, uh, kind of a no harm, no foul kind of thing, if nobody reports it. A septic system can be done, and if, if nothing happens, it could be done wrong, so if we require them to bring in, all they have to do with the D N R. It's a little bit tough right now, because you gotta get perk test, soil samples, uh, stuff like that, get, you have to get all that done in order to figure out the size of your drain fields and stuff. I would rather them be required to do, uh, D N R permit, and then they show an engineered drawing, this, this will be works of sanitary significance. Anything over twenty units, um, of water, it's work of, works of sanitary significance, and it's required to be engineered by the D E A N R. So, if we require them to do that, that it will be engineered and be done how it's supposed to be done, okay? And the sewers will be done, so then they could bring in the permit, they can show Bill or Gary, that way it's done right, if they just draw up something right now. Things change, if they get a perk test done in two months, and they're like, well, shoot, this perk rate is terrible, we have to. And they're like, well, shoot, this perk rate is terrible. We have to have a hundred more feet of drain field. And they they what, they gotta come back in for another C U P. Like, I I would rather put a condition on it that. Like they've, I had it done to me on my stuff. This is conditional on the A N R approval. Brought in before a building permit is issued and then that way we know everything's done right. And I I believe you'll do it right. I do. Um I just think that we really need to start taking care of the stuff out there. Especially when we just watched, I just watched twelve acres get completely tore up because somebody did it wrong.
Yeah, we were under the assumption that we had to have that permit.
Yeah, and it is state regulation. It's just basically, for instance, that gentleman knew that it had to be done. It was brought up at the meeting. He still did it. He still did it wrong and it all got tore up again. And he had to pay for it, so it'll save you guys money, it'll save time, it'll make everything better if we do it that way. That's my opinion.
This is a five million dollar investment. Don't do it right.
Yeah. That's how I look at it.
Well, is anybody else got any questions for Dan?
Thank you. What was the, what was the height? I don't know if I, what's the height of these buildings?
Hi, eighteen. They talked about sixteen. I'm encouraging them to go eighteen, can't ever go too by. Thank you.
Thanks. Don't see anybody, but I'll ask if there's anybody from the public who wishes to speak. Just for discussion now. I understand what the project is and it sounds like a good idea to me. I just am struggling still how to fit that into like site commercial. To make it so that we're not having to issue variances and I'm not sure that we can waive. The variance process with this conditional use process.
Well, Gary, like I said, Gary has done this many times. It's possible that they could just get a variance for the whole project, I believe. So they wouldn't have to apply for a hundred variances, just apply for a variance for each one, but.
The problem with that, I see, is you're asking for a variance for something that hasn't happened yet. And you're asking for a variance for somebody, for an owner that isn't here to represent themselves. A future owner that's not identified yet, which. Yeah, the setbacks, the lot sizes, setbacks, all that stuff.
For each unit.
Because according to our zoning ordinance to apply for the variance, the person, the owner of it has to apply for the variance and they have to. Have something that's being varied while you don't have either of those.
When.
They're not nonconforming yet.
So Dan.
You're talking about making them nonconforming in the future and asking for a future variance, but I don't see how we can issue one. Ahead of time. Yeah, to basically keep this from, like, right now, we could issue the permit. There's no variance needed. It meets all the requirements, but going into it, we know that you're going to be asking for. You're gonna be needing to ask for a variance for each one of these things.
Yeah, we're asking for it now because we're not gonna spend five million dollars to come back here to say.
Right, and I'm I'm, what I'm struggling with is how do we issue one, issue a variance? For something in the future that isn't identified yet, when we have to have an identified owner and identified variance of what we're varying.
So would you, would you be lording them out or whatever you call it, plotting them out? Would you be doing that as they are sold or after it is built, you will do all of it? Then you will do all of it or per building?
But then that still doesn't guarantee, based on our process, that doesn't guarantee you that you're going to get those variances. Is what I'm saying, so. I don't want, I don't, that, I know that's why you're here, but I don't see how we can give you that variance. Ahead of time. I guess the only way I know for sure that we could do this is if it was a P U D. Where you can make your own. You basically make your own rules for that zoning district.
Are you on a, I'm guessing you're on a timeline? Yeah.
Yeah.
So that would, it would set you back thirty days and I've been in the position and so was Whitetail in the position. And he just had to throw away his project pretty much and then just do an R B park. I'm sorry, I'm just trying to figure out the a solution. I just don't know, like you, I don't know what to do. I'm just trying to figure it out.
Because I don't, I. I don't know, I guess. No, I don't think that they're gonna give you a variance because we don't know exactly what you're even varying. We can't put a, we can't put a lot size on it. We can't put a a setback or what, I guess we can say zero setback on the one, but we don't know any of the rest of it.
We don't know. The zero setbacks, all of them.
Okay, so you got that and then the lot size, but then.
And that, that's where the the problem came up because then these twin homes came up. And they don't have minimum lot size. I don't believe the variance was issued. I have to go back and check, but. They were allowed to build with less than an acre per side. And like he wants to do only commercial stuff.
And then you gotta reapply for a P U D.
P U D is like a rezone.
Yeah, basically, a P U D is legal spot zoning, pretty much. You can do. As long as the county approves the plan, you can do a lot of different things in one specific zone. Like, for instance, Whitetail Ron wanted to do storage units and uh. Uh R B park all in one and it was brought up to him that it's kind of a mixed use. He should apply for a P U D. Well, then he scratched his storage units and just went to campground, yeah. Like, for instance, uh it's a, that Three Sons R B Park, that's a P U D at the bottom of the hill. Uh it's like a custom for him in Lakeside Commercial down there. Is there any way? I I just can't think of any conditions that we can put on it to make it work.
The only concern we have of the P U D is if you do a P U D here, then you've got other people that may wanna do something.
It's, you almost need a, like, say, a commercial P U D. As we have self standard, I think that it's gonna be a bunch of different rules. You know, in a typical P U D, if we're talking about lighting, we're talking about access, we're talking about, you know. Screening, all these different things to do this and you're not gonna do that at this place. I mean. The lighting is probably the only thing you can really do. You know what the access is gonna be to the front of the, to the front of buildings and. Part of the, part of the thing has always been to access. Access for fire and all that stuff.
So one of the things, uh so with my R B parks, we have two hundred and sixty sites out there. And there was an emergency out there and it was a tough thing to do, so uh I worked it out with Gary and Emergency Management. And we got them uh basically an address plan of each site number. And I have my parks labeled in sections so they can get to it easier. Um I would agree with that on this also. It would be great if Emergency Management knew, like what. Sheds or whatever is what number?
Because as of right now, we don't have it, you don't have a plat for us of. All the different lots that we would issue the variance on. We have nothing to go on to tell us, yes, this is variance, this is a variance, this is a H. One that's gonna be on there. So. You can't really. Right, and I, I mean, the whole thing.
If you were gonna build a house out there, you know, nothing else, just a house out there, you would have, you're gonna plot on that plot. And you're gonna set, you're gonna have to be all these things and but you gotta, because of location or because of the size of life. You you need to build closure to the lot line that what is allowed. So then you come and ask for that variance, but that only pertains to that lot.
Right.
So when, what you're asking, I, what I understand you're asking for here is variance for the whole block of units. But then when you get it built, you're gonna plot it out and sell each individual lot. Right, so. But they all, they all come under this now as you change it from a one deal to a single plot. Now it becomes an issue about.
Each one needs its own. Yeah, each one needs its. Well, under ordinance, yeah. That's the way I would read it.
If he could apply for one variance, right, if he did it all in his, sorry, all in his name?
Well, and then the other issue too is with the variances, you have to identify. Specific hardship, well, you're creating the hardship, so it's.
So basically what I'm bringing this back to is like what Bill brought up with the duplex uh that was up on there. So you said that was in court, Bill, like.
I know there was. Or maybe they applied for a variance, it was rejected, they hired an attorney, but one of those duplexes out there, there was a a lawsuit, I believe. And they were able to go ahead.
They were able?
Yeah, because they built it.
Oh, okay.
Um but like I said, and this is, this is where the confusion comes in because Keith Icoff applied. He wanted to do twin homes on an acre, but they said you have to have one acre for each half. You go down here, you've got twin homes that have half an acre where they they built on a little over an acre and just did what Dan wants to do with this individual. And I know, and I I wish Gary was here, he had, he did have eye surgery. He he talked about with with Dan about this, he says there's a way to do it. He could explain it better than I can, but he said it's done all over the place all the time, so.
Okay, so if we pass this. Or if we vote for this, not saying that everybody agrees, uh but if it goes to the commission. Uh will Gary be there to explain and do you believe? Uh this is what I, if it's, if this is already done and it is legal and everything's good to go, I would like say this is setting precedent. And I see no difference here and then what he's trying to do, in my opinion, I mean, that's if you guys feel different, I guess, but um.
Gary will be there. He he has a medical procedure this week, but he spoke to Dan, Dan came in, we all sat down and talked about it. And Gary's familiar, they did this, they've done this all over the place. It's a common thing. I can't explain the procedure because I'm not experienced enough. But and I I know it's confusing.
For myself, I'm, I apologize because I wasn't, you know, that.
And there's something to that. If if we're not sure, then we can get more consultation and. Get a better understanding when it goes to the county commission.
Well.
Question is, because if he was just renting them out.
It'd be clear cut.
It'd be clear cut. So there there, Gary there said there's a way to do it. I'm I'm not familiar with it, but it didn't sound that complicated.
Honestly, honestly, the way I see it, all the risk is in Dan's hands if the variances don't get approved later.
Well, that's, I mean, I I guess I have no problem with that. I'm just trying to figure out how we.
I, the only thing I can think of is if if it was a P U D and it was all set out. But even then, it would have to be lotted out specifically where it's at for like eighty lots.
This is, we're kind of blind sided on this a little bit about.
But it's kind of like Dan mentioned about townhouses. If you had a a four unit townhouse, you wouldn't have to apply for for variances, I don't believe. You know, they just work it in as part of the plan and maybe I agree with Dan about moving it to the county commission. And letting them make the decision, but if they don't, we can just do a P U D then and see.
Yeah, but with the townhouse, it's all planned out ahead of time.
But they still have to survey it after the fact because they don't wanna build it.
They're gonna re-survey it.
If it's with a townhouse, they do it after the fact.
Yeah, it was the same.
You build it and then you re-survey it so you know exactly where the center of the.
With all townhouses, it has to be surveyed after so you know exactly where the walls are, so they have to come in after it's built, no matter what.
It is a little complicated, but it is a good project. So this, can I ask a question? City has their ordinance. How do they work around the zero setbacks? They just included it as part of the project? Where it sits on the lot.
Right, so if you went to.
So do they, though, in that instance? Where you have a building that, like these would, the building itself would meet the requirements, meet the variance and stuff like that. Again, the buildings that you're talking about, like in the city, and three different people occupy that. But they don't go in and plot. Their space out, other than for tax purposes, but is it registered? Is that?
So Bill, go search um one oh five, level five. This is one building. There's a party wall, they call in between each building. So we built the buildings. And then we came back and re-surveyed them. So the setback is met here.
Yeah, the the structure itself meets the, meets the setbacks. So then we, we're at a point then. So we're at a point of. Where we can issue the variance for.
Well, the structure doesn't need a.
Has proposed or whatever. And then um basically. And then, um, basically, even though they might have come in and asked for, there'd be no reason to come and ask for another variance. Because unless they're going to change the structure.
Right, you don't need a variance for the structure because they would meet their setbacks on the lots themselves, the build, the, the whole structure would.
There's no variance required until they start parceling it out.
Yep.
Right, so basically, if there's, if there's whole structure meets the setbacks and all the stuff that is required to approve. And what happens inside of that space doesn't matter, other than you could plot or you could sell one room or a door off of it or whatever. But that structure itself, from our standpoint, that structure still needs requirement.
Correct.
Well, building permit, building, yeah, that's all, that's all, that's all fine, just the parcel, individual lot doesn't need.
That's what, I think the, the issue.
The building meets everything, that's fine, but the lot itself doesn't, the lot size requirements and everything. Once they start piecing it out.
I think that's something that has to be, because if they, like I said, they allowed it for a couple twin homes, they're going to have to make some consistency there.
So he is, but he is applying for a conditional use permit to build this building. As long as he sets that back there.
You're not approving the dividing of the buildings, he's going to have, you know, he'll have to have that all worked out.
There is no request for variance.
There, no, there's no request for variance because there's nothing to variance.
So he's asking for the variance, he wants to prove the setbacks, but I think that's something that the county commission, we can get a little more input in. Well, and like I said, I, I apologize, I haven't, I have never gone through one, so I can't give experience. Gary has, so he could probably explain it a little better and how it all works, and so.
But if, if all we're doing is looking at it from the, asking for a conditional use permit to build those structures, and as long as they meet the setbacks.
Well, yeah, for what he's actually got an application here for, we can, we can issue a C U P for this building. The way it is, just that, the way I see it is we can't issue a preemptive variance for the future. So then you'd have to come back in at that point, I guess.
Well, and that's where I think Gary's knowledge is important because I don't think he needs to, I think they just do it as part of the process. We're going to allow you to divide these up, but.
See, and I, I think, Chris, I think that what he's doing here is, is our job right now is.
What he's applied for.
Give you a conditional use permit or deny you a conditional permit based on nothing other than what you, you're providing with us. In the process of going between our approval or disapproval, whether going to the board of adjustment or the county commission. That's when this other issue has to get solved, going into them, how they're going to, how they think it should be handled at that point. But as far as from our standpoint, as long as he's not here asking for a variance, do this, you're asking for a conditional use permit. To build those structures as we have seen and only meet those requirements, then they need to work that out.
And if the county commission isn't satisfied, then we'll do a P U D.
I would encourage county to consider changes to the ordinance to allow this kind of development. It just hasn't happened that much, so.
Well.
That's what I say, even with us here, I mean, right, none of us sitting here, and I've been here since it got started. If I ever run into something like this where we had to make that decision on it, you know, a decision on something that.
And I guess what would solve this in our ordinance would just be changing the minimum lot size down to. Know what, six thousand square feet or whatever, but that would solve that.
I have, we have to look at the cities because those aren't six thousand square.
Well, yeah, right, it means what. I mean, to make that fit in our lakeside commercial, the way it sits, the, the only single change you could do is just drop the minimum lot size down to.
But I think it's like.
Really small.
Yeah, you'd mentioned a strip, somebody mentioned a strip mall, which this isn't, but it's the same concept.
Well, that's.
And there's got to be a way to do that without, you know, he's meeting the lot size for the whole structure. And so there's, there's some way to work that out in between.
Yeah, just like with the duplexes out there, yeah.
There, there's a way to do it, I, like I said, I apologize, I don't know, you guys don't either, so I don't feel too bad, I'm just kidding.
I'll make a motion to approve the C U P on the condition that. A letter from the D A N R is submitted to, uh, the. Is submitted before a building permit is issued. Did I say that right? You want me to reword it?
Nope, that's fine.
Just a point, Matt, it's what you're, initially you're looking at is he needs to contact the state, make sure they approve. Septic system or.
His entire, his plan in, in its entirety, so there are multiple divisions of the D A N R. There's one permit that they'll need, uh, is a surface water permit for the dirt work. Another one that they're going to need is for the works of sanitary significance for the water. Another one that they'll need is for the septic system, they will have to submit a drawing to the D A N R. The water is the only thing that will, should be, I'm pretty sure if it's over twenty. Sites or twenty connections, it's works of sanitary significance, and that's the only part that needs to be engineered. The rest shouldn't have to be engineered, so there's like three different divisions. This might be something different, but basically what I'm looking for is a letter from the D A N R. Uh, saying that this project is approved in its entirety from the D A N R before we issue a building permit.
All right, I have a motion by Matt and a second by Dennis, anything further to add from the board? I guess just to clarify, this is a C U P for building as presented. It's not really covering the issue of, um, future lots or subdividing. But, um, yeah, just clarification on that, I guess that's something, I hope Gary's at the county commission to explain. Okay, go ahead, one last comment, yeah, go ahead.
So.
Well, I'm, I guess I'm hoping that Gary can provide the clarity of what we're asking here of how this, how he sees this working through our process. Um, it's possible that the county commission would approve the C U P as we have without addressing that issue. And then at that point in the future, when you wanted to subdivide that, then you'd have to come in for variance on subdivisions. Um, or unless Gary can tell them the procedure or give you clarity of the procedure of how to go about that, so you don't have to do a variance process.
I would think if those duplexes were done, in my opinion, maybe Gary's dealt with that, like Villa said, maybe he knows something that we don't. So if he can shed light on that situation at the time of the meeting or before the meeting, uh, to figure that out. It's possible that they would approve it at that time, or like he said, uh.
They could approve the C U P just like we have and not address it at all, and then you have to deal with that in the future, which. Yeah. All right, roll call vote when you're ready.
Barkle.
Yes.
Evans.
Yes.
Michael. Nelson.
Yes.
Weiss.
Yes.
Hoffman.
Yes.
All right, thanks.
And that gets to that.
Yeah, I guess I, I just don't quite understand how you get around doing the variance process in the future once he starts trying to subdivide it, but.
It's just crazy that I've never heard of this before, like with duplexes, like how many, there's not many probably in the county as far as duplexes go. But, I mean, it's pretty, it's the same thing, like.
Well, I think the discussion, Matt, too, with, you know, we talked about the P U D, but.
Yeah.
Was the fact that, you know, you just throw away all the rules and they start out and everybody agrees to that set of rules, which, like he was talking about, they have the homeowners association or whatever that's, you know, going to have covenants and all that stuff. On a lot of these things, and I think the county just kind of came around to this in the last six months too about if. If. The, the information is lost someplace that you can look at what the covenants are.
And decide the rules from there.
But at least in a P U D, that would be public record or, you know, there's a record of that, so that, okay, this is what we all agreed on that day. And, you know, this is what you follow, and that's, that becomes the issue, I think.
It's just.
P U D thing came up was because we could have done, we could do a lot of things, but then we'd need a lot more information about what was going to happen, of all things, you don't care.
Yeah, like a full scale plan.
Well, a full scale plan, a copy of the covenants and basically use that as a template and then say, your minimum lot size is going to be a hundred square feet. And you're going to have no setback on your parcel and all that, you can do that with P U D, but.
But I think, again, I think the reason, the concern with doing that in Lakeside Commercial in a small space like that was opening a can of worms. To a bunch of people wanting to do something different and, yeah, then you've got a whole area that's got a whole bunch of different. But I do agree with Dennis with the covenants, you know, the last month, I don't know how many calls, calls I've had, people, someone's not following the covenants. We tell them, you've got to take care of that through your HOA or through an attorney, and half the time, at least half the time, they don't want to mess with it, so it just goes on.
But I say, I've come to the conclusion that covenants basically are worthless as far as enforcing them, because unless you got a really strong homeowner or association that was after it, like that. Houses you follow that they made it tear down because it was not built according to the district, you know, that, that's teeth there, but that was big money, fight big money there.
Got to be able to hire an attorney and want to spend money and want to win.
Yeah, and some of these covenants, like I've seen a ton of covenants, I, I look at a lot of different contracts. These covenants aren't written by lawyers even sometimes, and if they are, sometimes they're not even the greatest and they have so many loopholes in them, and it's just.
My question on, on covenant, then two goes back on to about easements and access easements, you know, into property and stuff like that, you know. They always told me, you know, that if you have an easement, that for one thing is it should be, it better be recorded.
It's on the plat.
If it's on the plat, it better be recorded as such, and then it should, it should also be defined because. I got into a situation where a gentleman was complaining about me fixing the road going back in there. We discussed about what reasonable access is. Reasonable access wasn't necessarily the cow trail down through, you know, five, a mile of land to get back with a footprint. It's had to be, you know, but someplace it has to be actually stated what that easement entails and what it allows.
Yeah, honestly, the way I see this, it's just something new and just like Shouse's coming to town, it's just something that comes out of nowhere that.
I mean, it might, I mean, like in Article Five, we have a big laundry list of things for just a few specific examples. And it's looking more and more like we're going to have to start adding that kind of thing into these different districts. All right.
Anyway.
Moving on to the plats, um, the Smith plant, uh, plat of Smith Evergreen Acres in the northeast quarter of section one. T ninety four north, range fifty four west of fifth PM, Yankton County, South Dakota, all in township.
They just surveyed off twenty four point seven acres plus the access here. I think we're just this little strip here too, so they have access.
How, sorry, I can't see it, how wide is that bottom access? About twenty six?
Twenty five or twenty six.
Yeah, I think it would only need, well, how does that work as far as like our subdivision ordinance on those, as far as roads, it's all private, so it doesn't matter.
Yeah, it's not a road, it's part of the land.
Oh. Second.
Motion in a second.
Barkle.
Yes.
Evans.
Yes.
Michael.
Yeah.
Nelson.
Yes.
Weiss.
Yes.
Hoffman.
Yes.
Right, next plat is law plat of lot two, block one, law overlook subdivision in the northeast quarter of section eighteen. T ninety three north, R fifty six west of the fifth PM, Yankton County, South Dakota, Utica South. Are the same that we have just about every month.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Barkle.
Yes.
Evans.
Yes.
Michael. Nelson.
Yes.
Weiss.
Yes.
Hoffman.
Yes.
Shut, uh, replat of lots two and thirteen, whitetail run in the southeast quarter of the northeast quarter of section sixteen. Uh, T ninety three north, R fifty six west of the fifth PM, Yankton County, South Dakota. Hereafter known as lot twenty one, whitetail run in the southeast quarter of the northeast quarter of section sixteen. T ninety three north, R fifty six west of the fifth PM, Yankton County, South Dakota. That's two lots that we're just talking about.
Correct.
Motion to approve.
Motion in a second.
Barkle.
Yes.
Evans.
Yes.
Michael. Nelson.
Yes.
Weiss.
Yes.
Hoffman.
Yes.
Uh, right, Hanson, plat of lots one and two of Elmer's Edition in the southeast quarter of section twenty five. T ninety six north, range fifty five west of the fifth PM, Yankton County, South Dakota.
This fell, falls under section five thirteen, Farmstead, so it's not quite twenty acres. But it is approved under the Farmstead provision.
I have a question on the, just spending some time just reading through, I know it works out, but how come it had to be approved by city of Yankton?
That's just part of the standard thing that's generated, so it gets checked regardless of. So, yeah, it's previous Farmstead surveyed that off with about ten, fifteen acres, two and a half.
Second.
All right, motion in a second, we can vote when you're ready.
Barkle.
Yes.
Evans.
Yes.
Cat, uh, Michael.
Yes.
Nelson.
Yes.
Weiss.
Yes.
Hoffman.
Yes.
Question about the city. You asked it.
Yeah, this is on this one too.
Yeah, it's on the whole.
All right, Paulson, plat of Paulson Homestead in the northwest quarter of the southwest quarter and in that portion of the northeast quarter. And in that portion of the northeast quarter, of the southwest quarter, lying west of South Dakota Highway fifty-two and section fourteen. Township ninety-three north, range fifty-six west of the fifth P M, Yankton County, South Dakota, Sifka South.
So they own this, it was thirty-nine or forty acres, they had a little parcel here that the house was on, they're just combining it all.
Put it all on.
That down with the original.
Um, I believe so, somehow there's a.
They go down in their world, when they took that house that Doc Daniel put up there, it used to be down there. All the towns with the valley, and then they had to cross the creek there, it's where the old business site for the Pauls.
I don't think so, this is right off of fifty-two.
Yeah, just below the hill to the west.
Oh, yeah. Geez, you've got a long history there. But they, they also own another approximately forty acres back here too.
Second.
Right, we can vote when you're ready.
Barkle.
Yes.
Evans.
Yes.
Michael.
Yes.
Nelson.
Yes.
Weiss.
Yes.
Hoffman.
Yes.
All right, the Smiths, plat of lot fifteen, being a replat of lots eleven and twelve, block three. Beaver Beach Park in the northwest quarter of the southeast quarter of section twenty-seven. T ninety-five north, R fifty-six west of the fifth P M, Yankton County, South Dakota.
Central. Yeah, a couple bought both these lots, they were two separate lots, there was a house right on the property line, so they had to replant it in the one. Yes. Apparently that's a trend down on Beaver Beach Road, just put it on the lot line. Or was, I should say.
Second.
All right, vote when you're ready.
Barkle.
Yes.
Evans.
Yes.
Michael. Nelson.
Yes.
Weiss.
Yes.
Hoffman.
Yes.
All right, only hour and seven minutes behind schedule, but is there any public comment? Seeing none, public comment is closed. Need a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.